Let me cut the order.
Gary.
Here.
Zach.
Here.
Ruth?
Here.
Item five, United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation undergone indivisible, with repeating justice for all. Okay, item three, discussion possible approval of minutes from September 2nd, 2025, Commissioner Munden.
No, she's approved.
Second.
Gary?
Yes, yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Item four, discussion possible approval of bank purchase orders. Motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Item five, discussion and possible approval of the Grady County Purchase Card Payment to Bank of America for the current and previous months.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
These are the Bank of America ones we just approved, right?
Uh huh.
Okay. Get rid of my red folder, she had a question.
I'm saying Charles. Item number six. Review purchase orders generated by the Grady County governing bodies during the time in previous months and authorized to deny payment of such purchases.
Okay, we have the Sheriff's Office to Van Dyke Mechanical, DEP worked at Sheriff's Office, DEP worked at Rare House Per Share, nine thousand eight hundred fifty dollars. Proper purchasing procedures were not followed. Uh, no work order was sent in, not done through MIKE, nine thousand five hundred eighty-two, eighty-eight. Tuttle Senior Citizens, uh, to the Tuttle Senior Citizens Pay Row, July twenty twenty-five Pay Row reimbursement was eight thousand nine hundred thirty-two, eighty-nine. Proper purchasing procedures were not followed, invoice dated before PO, PO should have been open July first and it was open till July seventh. LX Senior Citizens, H&R Block, proper purchasing procedures were not followed, it's a hundred and fifty dollars, PO should have been opened before August. LX Senior Citizens, Auto Chlore Systems LLC. It was open eight twenty-five, proper purchasing procedures were not followed, invoice dated before PO, two forty-four ninety-five. LX Senior Citizen, Automatic Fire Controls, Fire Control Service, procedures were not followed, invoice stated before PO, four thirty-nine, forty-one. Chickasha Senior Citizens, Mosley Agency, estimated surety bond removal, procedures not followed, invoice stated before PO, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars. LX Senior Citizens, Public Service Company, August Utilities. Proper purchasing procedures not followed, PO not open when received, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and five cents. Rush Springs Senior Citizens, Milton's Heat and Air, fridge repairs, proper purchasing procedures were not followed, requisition receiver and invoice, all faxed in at the same time, purchasing not responsible for this transaction, four ninety-five, twenty-four.
Question on that.
Uh huh.
Did, uh... Have they? Have you talked to about that before? Or are they getting, are they in the process now, since they've got a change of board down there, getting things squared away?
I think they're all getting, I think they're trying, um, LX, you know, has got two new board members, so I think they've got some issues. Tuttle, I think everybody in the world has talked to the Tuttle Senior Citizens, I don't, I don't know, I do have a letter, I do have a letter started, um, just haven't got it all worded the way I thought, maybe we should word it.
I probably don't need to be the one wording.
So Jill, this one says, you just have to look at it?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we sign these or are they on this?
No, they're on the top.
Okay. So do, does anybody need to look at it?
Just look at it, you...
I make a motion to approve, um, these payments.
One second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
What is these?
Just some, they're not, because they were POs, I think, opened prior and they got closed out.
Oh, oh, okay.
No need. Got to work now. What's that?
Okay, item number seven, discussion and possible action on reports from the Emergency Management Director, Grady County Fire Department, and Safety Director, Vigil.
Uh, so last, or Dell's here, he's working, um, uh, let's see, oh, I got shirts in, so he said I'm bona fide now, so we're good.
A little official.
Yeah, there you go, a little official. So last week I did some more meetings and visits, uh, I talked with the new, he's been there thirty days for, for the VOTEC, uh, El Reno UConn Chickasha, his name's Keith Stewart, he was very squared away, that means very, I mean, he knows his stuff, and for some reason they thought it prudent that they needed somebody to come in and do security emergency, uh, preparedness stuff for those three campuses, to even include, he asked at one of the meetings, and I shared this with you as a thought, you know, how do we transport five hundred kids? How fast can we get buses here, transportation, if something happens? So I was like, man, that's great thinking, you're thinking like me, so we hit it off good, and I could see us just supporting each other, uh, in the county, uh, even beyond, because, you know, El Reno's close to us, you know, if something happens, how do we help, partner? Um, I met with, uh, Steve, the CEO of Grady Memorial, he is very engaged in emergency preparedness, he said he was in the floods down there in Currit, Texas, uh, even preparing for hurricanes on the Texas coast, where they already had pre-planned movement of people in homes, like, uh, senior citizen homes, or those kind of homes, like, this senior citizen home will go to somewhere in the interior of Texas, it's already been identified. So those are just things that are broadening our look at crisis and emergency management across our county, and it makes me think even more outside the box than I usually do, uh, so I don't know if that's a good thing or bad thing, but, uh, it, it, yeah, the CEO, he is very for, he wants to be very involved. Met with South Beach Army again, um, Joseph Nieto at VOTEC School, this week I have a few to meet, and, um, I'm gonna work on checking our emergency management vehicles that are in the sheriff's yard, so to speak, I'm gonna start peeking at those, checking them for inventory, uh, Laura's been working, trying to figure out that inventory book that I looked at Friday, it was like, there's just a few things here that we gotta find, but, uh, so it's been going good, this is my fourth week, so I'm determined, yeah, so I want to be doing something right. So, that's it for me.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Kim Duke is not here, she sent me email and said the only thing that we might question is that there was a deposit further down, and it was an over Johnson Hill damage, the original quote was ten, and after they got it done, it was twelve, so that checks just for an additional amount that we got from ACCO. Uh, I know there were several, uh, fire calls in the Naples area, and a couple of domestics, just because I get them on my phone, and Pocass had had something happen, so I know they were, some of them were kind of busy.
Um, well, Grady County had two, uh, reportable, one reportable motor vehicle accident and one injury, uh, last week, um, I conducted a safety meeting with the court clerk's office last week, and will be dealing emergency management fire, uh, this Thursday, and also be going out to District Three, uh, District Two Barn, uh, this Friday. I did a safety orientation for two new hires at District, uh, Two, and one new hire at District Three, uh, last week, um, I talked to Sydney, we opened a PO for the annual, uh, fire extinguisher inspections that we do every year, uh, with the county facilities, own facilities, uh, did talk to each of your office managers to open a PO for, uh, uh, your guys' barns, and to get with foremen on coordinating that with K and M Safety Solutions. I also talked to, um, uh, the sheriff department for their personal vehicles, I mean, not personal vehicles, their, their vehicles, with the sheriff department, Cindy, uh, with the assessors, and Dale with, uh, emergency management, uh, so we should be, uh, getting this done tomorrow, talked to Vicky, so Vicky will be getting everybody's extinguishers out of the chambers that they need to tomorrow, uh, to be able to do this, uh, first day in the morning, and we'll do our, our annual inspection and get that done for this year. I think that, uh, I might have to go to chiropractor again, I woke up this morning and I was kind of, uh, walking kind of crooked, so, uh, getting a little stuck.
Have we ever quoted anybody else on getting our, getting those fire extinguishers inspected? It was pretty high last year, like, five thousand or something for our barn alone, so...
Right, and, and there's, yeah, and I, and like I told, each one, we, we haven't really quoted, I mean, we can go around and look and see, I know a lot of them, I think last year might have been because he's the, I think, the three-year or five-year, or whatever term that is, where they have to completely, uh, replace them, uh, so that was one of the expenses that we're gonna have, he's talking about, um, maybe, it hasn't been put in the, in the, uh, books yet as far as the, uh, NFP, as far as having the ten pounders, every, every building at least having a ten pounder, we still have some that are five, I don't want to move forward in that until all of that's set in stone, uh, so there has been some, uh, costs on that, um...
I wouldn't mind reaching out and quoting some, quoting some other people just to see if we're, we're in the ballpark, or if we need to try to make some changes, but you can think of, but it's...
Yeah, I think it was like thirty-one, thirty-one hundred.
Thirty-two hundred, but it was, it was...
Don't you have a fireplace, does P&L do that? Is there a P&L in my title?
There is, but I don't know.
I don't know, I know they used to do supar, uh, fire suppression, we used them at the school for stuff in kitchens, so I don't, I don't know if they do, but yeah, it might be worth looking into, like, the next time.
Yeah, I'll talk to you also Summit, they do our sprinkler system, um, and we'll, we'll be doing that next year, uh, next week also, um, and so we'll have a PO open for that, do the two oh five Chickasha Avenue, and, uh, I believe, uh, October we'll do the courthouse. But yeah, I'll listen to that exact, it's the October part, somebody.
I made a discussion possible action on, on the report and work order from Construction Superintendents.
We don't have anything that needs to be approved, um, we did those sound deadening panels, but the health department last week and put some bollards in, and your dirt work is done down there, I'm meeting the plumber today, so we can lay everything out, and then...
I'm moving along.
Yeah. Uh, Chris Walsh was finishing stuff at the jail before he jumps on this parking lot, he's hoping to start moving dirt this week, to the sheriff's parking lot, but, uh, me and my guys will be down at your barn all week with all the little things that we're doing there, so, long as nothing crazy happens between.
It is Monday.
Now that I've made a schedule, it'll be a crazy one.
Okay, item nine, public comments, and nobody signed up. Item ten, new business in accordance with Open Meeting Act, Title twenty-five upon Statute three eleven, take nine, new business, just defined as any matter not known about or which could not have been reasonably presumed prior to the time of post-reach achievement.
I had said something about P and G operating last week, uh, they needed a W nine, and they sent me the division orders, this is something that we found, it was from October of twenty twenty-four, uh, she sent me those division orders on, um, Monday, they're, they've got some money in suspense for us, we never sent any paperwork back to them, so I just brought this to see if we could get it signed and get it back to her, it just needs the chairman's signature, I believe, but there's somebody sitting there for us.
It need to be voted on or just signed?
Do we need to vote on it, Jill? It's...
Probably need to vote on it.
Can, can we do that new minutes, or do you have to... Our new business?
Depends on when we got it.
I was gonna say, did you find out?
I either got it Thursday afternoon or Friday morning, but I'd have to go back and check my email for sure.
I know what Charles would say.
Okay, let's wait, and we'll do it next week, um, then I've got another something that came up Friday, I guess, uh, so we were looking into Mike doing something, I don't know if the county does this, but he's, they're literally running out of room, they keep pushing Mike's equipment, uh, and we found a building that can be rented, and we did put this in the general fund budget, we allowed him, uh, twenty-four thousand, it's right at nineteen hundred a month, it's, uh, fenced, we would have to do the water, I mean, we would have to pay the utility bills and get all that out there, but, um, Mike talked to Jimmy Johnson, it's out on Honda Lane, hadn't flooded since twenty, two thousand and seven, and we would, I would like to make a motion to get Mike a building, so he can get his stuff moved and have an area to work and have a office, now that he's getting more employees, he doesn't have room over there, and all of his stuff is getting pushed either towards the back, and when he goes in there, he has to move everything out to get to his stuff, people are using tools, and then they're not putting them back in the right place, and, um, Mike, Mike's job, jobs are getting larger and larger, and he does need a space to be able to put his tools out for his, his guys to work, so it is in the general fund budget, so I make a motion to approve us trying to get this building leased from Jimmy Johnson.
One second, Dan.
Gary?
Yes.
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Okay, I don't have any new business.
I have none.
Okay. Item eleven, discussion possible approval of the following draw requests from the Grady Memorial Hospital Sales Stack held with the First National Bank. Uh, United Refrigeration Incorporated, AC tandem unit with compressors for six thousand two hundred twelve dollars, nineteen cents. Uh, City Pavement LLC, parking lot ceiling for thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. And Oswald Restaurant Supply Electric Range sixty-inch kitchen, twenty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars, maybe eight cents.
I make a motion to approve this, I did, um, go into the basement, enter the basement at the hospital, and believe me, they need whatever air conditioning compressors that they can get.
I'll second that.
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
Thank you, we appreciate it, you're being there for that tour. It was interesting.
There was not a sticker, so, uh, it...
I'm sure.
I turned around too.
I know.
We need AC compressor down there.
Okay, item twelve. Discussion and possible action on the preserving and advancing chem transportation PAC fund, and deciding how the money will be distributed within the highway fund and the new PAC fund, as well as creating and establishing accounts, requisitioning officers and receiving officers as needed.
Well, we won't get the two-thirds money, we would only get the one-third, can that not just be done on the percentage, if we get the one-third, could that not just be...
I don't think we'll get, I mean, I personally don't think we'll get any of it, I don't think it matters.
Yeah.
So we're, we're like twelve thousand dollars a mile, what we're getting on, on our road miles, so...
Yeah, we won't.
I don't think we'll ever see any of it.
We won't get the two-thirds, I just thought if we got the one-third, would we just divide it out the way we divide our regular funds?
That's what I would, I mean, that's my thought.
Okay, so... So, just put it into your regular account, think we're not gonna make a PAC fund? You can't do it that way, because we haven't looked it up, but... Right, and they've got the, the codes there, so however they say it, but I think, yeah, if, the only thing that we might get, which unlike Zach, I don't think we're gonna get any of it, would be that one-third on the second part, and I would just say divide it like we're dividing our regular funds.
Well, the state auditor is made up, the funds and everything, so we need to ask, um, but you can do it either way, we checked into it, and either way is fine, I mean, if you want to do regular money, but we didn't, if you wanted to track it or not.
The only thing I think we'd ever get would be something for a bridge, or something like that.
It would be, I mean, if they get it to a bridge, they're gonna specify which district gets it, if they just gave us, like, some money, then I'd say we'd just split it away.
True, we never get the PAC fund, because that means we're in a bind, but...
Yeah, right.
I didn't know enough about that dimension, but I do, the financial side just said you could do it either way, and we wanted to know if you wanted to set it up separately or not.
That only, that only will pertain to counties that get less than four thousand dollars a mile through road miles, so, and we're like twelve, twelve grand, thirteen grand a mile, something like that.
Four, four, three, just one.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if we ever got any, it would just be a little bit of that one-third, and...
I don't want PAC money, like...
We're go making a separate fund, and not just going to you, we're gonna, but we probably won't.
Are you ready to follow that?
Yeah.
So, take no action, or do you want to say specifically how you want to do it?
I, we, we could go ahead and vote on it, since we're here, it's an agenda item, we could go ahead and just vote to divide it amongst the three accounts, three districts, by the percentage for the, of the percentages divided.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
All right, item thirteen, discussion, possible action on a vehicle for a new hire to be in the construction department.
I, you know, we talked about this last week, but I'm bringing it back up because of our budget and the excise board, so Mike got a cost, he looked at the auto place online, and there was a...
Big S has around eighteen to twenty-one thousand, they've got a hundred thousand miles on them, I don't know, it's not gonna get a lot of miles, so it may not matter, but...
I, I also spoke to Mike, and I don't necessarily think this person needs to drive this vehicle home, back and forth, so it would just be a vehicle here, so I kind of looked at vehicles, um, and right now, and I'm talking about the other thing, but right now we're over about two hundred thousand in our budgets that we gotta balance, so I didn't know, we had moved the former commissioner's employee over to emergency management, we put that in their budget, so it's not coming out of highway, I didn't know if highway would be interested in paying for that truck, buying a newer truck, paying for it, I don't know if we could use, use tax for something like that. I looked at some vehicles, it would be roughly, depending on what we got, it would be a one-time purchase from us, if we did it, less than sixteen thousand a person, depending on what Mike wants, I was looking at a three-quarter ton, just a single cab.
That's fine, we just need something heavy enough, we're pulling a trailer with the lift on, and it's, um, I think that's too much for a half ton pickup.
I'm just bringing this to y'all. I'm just bringing this to y'all because I'm trying to figure out how we're gonna get the balance, the budget balance. That would help, it would take some money out of that ge, the general fund budget. I don't know if y'all are interested, when he told me that the vehicle was eighteen to twenty one thousand with any hundred, a hundred, a hundred and fifty miles on it. My concern is, did you get it and then it's in the shop? Uh, and I didn't know what y'all would wanna do because we got rid of the salary that would cost us quite a bit in highway. It'd be something y'all would wanna think about or how we could do that.
I'm gonna need to have a little bit of time to think of that.
Okay, so we can table that?
Yeah, let's table that one. Mind putting a pencil with it?
It, it's not a breaker, a deal breaker with the guy, uh, but I didn't feel like it would be something that we would want to let them drive back and forth because I.
I agree, I don't think he really even fits the criteria.
Right, um, you know, and then when you do that, you have gas and pipe pass associated and all that and um. And I, and like I said, I don't know if we could use, use tax for that.
Probably be a jail.
I really think we can use tax for about whatever we're willing to.
We can, I think we've gotta go into maybe capital improvement right now, but it, it would help, it would help us.
I almost don't know that next year if we don't need a budget, since that department is getting big or. I don't know if we ought to not budget our own, budget that department next, next year, their own budget line, line item.
With the general fund?
Just like, it'd be no different than what Dale, like Dale's budget.
Okay. It's coming out of general fund, so would we do a budget and then you could feed that, he could do a budget and feed that line into the overall general fund budget? Maybe something like that.
It'd be no different than Dale or.
Probably election board or something.
Yeah, election board, they have their own, they have their own budget.
They definitely have to be, but we told that Chris early on, so we.
So we, okay, so if we could use use tax, would you be more willing on that?
Use tax would be easier sell for, for uh my uh constituents.
Yeah.
Be easier sell that than using their, their highway money.
Okay, um, so I'll, I'll look into that and give that to you, but I can't remember what Kevie has added on that, but that would help us.
If you wanna look at that one at Big S, there's a twenty fifteen with a service bid, we had a hundred and eleven thousand on it.
We got a uh snap on scanner, we'll put it up to scanner, see if anything wrong with it.
I'm not opposed to going used, it's just the.
Used don't bother me, it's just.
Where do we draw the line if we have to spend ten or twelve grand over the year on fixing it?
Yes, that's my thought.
I bought some personal vehicles from him over there and had good luck.
We bought three or four over there and had any problem with them, so, um, he's usually pretty, I mean, usually shoots.
Yeah, I've known him for a long time.
Yeah, I just didn't want something ten years old with a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it, I just.
Send it, send that vehicle information to me and I'll send Ronnie over there and have you hook his scanner up to it.
And then I'll get a price on a three quarter ton regular cab.
That's what this is, a three quarter ton regular cab, two wheel drive, vinyl, that's probably the cheapest truck.
I think I looked at one today and just right off the top of my head, it was like forty three. So.
That's what I figured that worth about forty three.
Yeah. So we'll just, we'll table that and bring that back up next week and get some prices and stuff.
Is that your motion to table?
Table it.
I'll second that.
Carrie?
Yes.
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 Okay, item fourteen, discussion possible approval of twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, Grady County budget and submit to the.
Okay, so we're over two hundred thousand dollars, the exercise board said we need to cut that. So if we did take this truck out of something else, that would cut some. And then I visited with the sheriff this morning and, and this is my, I'm still learning. So when he asked for a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars for building improvement, I said, put it in your budget. But after visiting with Keely, Keely said we really needed to put that in capital improvement. We can earmark that for him and if he uses it, fine, and if he doesn't, then it's there. So we can put it in capital improvement, that would take a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars out of per se his budget. Between that and the vehicle, we would be getting very close, we just have to rework it. But they asked that we balance it the two hundred thousand or they would redline and start bouncing it. So I think it's better for us to try to figure it out and take it to the export, text size board and have them. But right there, a truck and that hundred and twenty five thousand, we're getting really close. Um, I did before prior, I looked at everybody's budget and tried to take them down a little bit on everything. Um, so Keely and, we can run the numbers, Keely and Jill and I and figure out where we're at. And, and I did talk to the sheriff this morning, he was good with that, he said, I wondered about that and I said, well, I'm just learning. So uh, we can move back to capital improvement and maybe we could get it on those balances and I could just let Jill text y'all or email y'all when we. Run those numbers if y'all are good with that.
Yeah.
But I, I visited with Gary before him over here.
That would be the thing.
Okay, so do we want to table that till next week to get it figured out? Or do we wanna?
We really need to get this done.
Or do we wanna make the changes and can?
Make the changes?
Can we go ahead and make the changes?
Upon, if we can get to that number and send it to the exercise board, because I've gotta set up a special amount for next week for them.
So that gets us with a hundred and twenty five thousand and forty three thousand.
And I don't know how much Kevie put in that budget for.
And it's just a one sixty eight, so we need forty two more thousand. Thirty two more thousand.
Do you know, do you know how much Kevie put in for a pickup in, in the general budget?
We talked about sixty, I mean. Good, I thought Mike had said forty, but then we decided if it was a new one, we would.
Go ahead and.
Over budget us a little bit.
That's sixty, that helps a little bit more.
For sure.
Uh, cause we over budgeted also for the rental of the building too. We were kinda trying to, we were trying to go high, so that way we'd get it high enough, we wouldn't be.
I think we're gonna need that for the building because we're gonna have to make sure he's got a phone and I think there's gonna be some um. Some cost, when, when I asked for about the twenty four thousand, I was like, well, that would work out great because it would give us a little leeway with making sure we do everything. Can you?
Thirty two.
Can you tell me how much you budgeted in the general fund for um the pickup for um?
Need to cut the balance somewhere.
The construction. Did you put in the whole year? Oh, tough for Jill. Yeah, yeah. But you, wow, you've put a lot in there for a pickup. Keely, you just made our dreams come true, thank you.
What were we gonna do after lunch then?
Yeah, she budgeted seventy five thousand for the vehicle, so there's your two hundred thousand.
Right there.
So, um.
That is easy, man.
We go on.
I think she over budgeted everything, so we could make sure we have money.
Go on and make the changes and get ready for the exercise board.
I'll make a motion to make some changes.
I'll second it.
Carrie?
Yes.
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 Okay, item fifteen. Discussion and possible approval of the county C PACE enabling resolution.
Okay, we have a lady here, Nan, is Nancy right?
Nancy, yes.
Nancy um presented to the Economic Development Council um a couple of weeks ago and I had to leave early. For a budget meeting, so I didn't get to hear everything, but the way I understand this is something that the counties have to approve for people to be able to go to the state and get help on a.
Economic development, it's a financing mechanism.
Yeah, so she's gonna explain more of it before we sign anything.
Yeah, thank you, I'm glad to explain. I come down from Tulsa this morning, um, I'm with INCOG, which is one of the eleven regional governments that's spread across. And INCOG is the one that stepped forward to um set up this program back in twenty twenty when um the governor, uh, Governor Stitt signed an amendment. To allow this type of financing into the state, it's commercial building, private capital, not any kind of federal or state tax dollars. Um, and it's enabled by counties. So it's enabled by counties because it uh leverages the property tax system. It has the word assessment in it, it becomes a C PACE special assessment is the security mechanism. However, it is not a property tax and it also has been developed at INCOG for any county that is opting in. To run completely outside the county's um administrative system, so it's not going to tax. Um, it doesn't go into the um assessor's records at all, uh, treasurers don't collect this payment, it's all handled. Um, by program, it's handled outside of the county administration. So it uh, I mentioned it's twenty twenty, it was actually launched as a statewide program in twenty one. And currently there are twenty counties that are um operating C PACE. We've had roughly nineteen um projects closed, but commercial building owners in a county that is, that is enabled for C PACE. Can uh, in a sense, it, they're able to consider a different kind of private capital financing in their capital stack. When they're going to develop or let's say it's a hundred year old building and they need to have a new roof and H V I C and they've gotta put some big capital investments in there. Where do they get the money, a C PACE financing, because it's secured, uh, similar to a property tax, it's secured as a special assessment. It can be, um, it, it can, it is um long term flat payments paid from the property owner that just borrowed that money. For this improvements to the capital provider once a year or it could be twice a year, uh, because property taxes in Oklahoma are set up that way. And it can be paid out over the long haul of, let's say, twenty or thirty years if those improvements are put on that building and they're going to be twenty or thirty years. So to get into this program, the state statute says that counties that are interested um can enable by passing a resolution. Yeah, we'll allow this type of financing and then they develop a program or they can third party administer out that program. Um, which is developed as Oklahoma's C PACE and it has INCOG as its administrator. So the, all of the documents, the template documents um that were developed for Oklahoma's C PACE. Um, run in the memorandum of agreement that Grady County would have with INCOG to administer this program. And in that memorandum of agreement, the template assessment document that the counties are using, um, all counties are using. Is a part of that, the program um enabling guidelines like uh what is eligible for this kind of financing, what is not eligible. The application documents, all of those things are in the program memorandum of agreement. Um, and uh, and the resolution itself is exhibit one of the memorandum of agreement. So there are really two, wet, two things that need to happen at a county level to enter into this program and that's enabling the resolution. And opting in by memorandum of agreement with INCOG to administer the program. So, and it, it's kind of confusing, so I'm glad to answer any questions and get any deeper there.
And Charles did look this over and said it was okay. So.
Essentially, if there becomes a project, um, and in fact, we were, INCOG was approached um by a capital provider wanting to. Work for a client and be able to bid this or to quote the C PACE financing to, I think it was an airport, the airport project.
Was the airport.
Yeah, so uh, we don't have the project, we don't have the application because the county's not in yet, so we would work that for them. And if it ends up and it's, would be a bigger deal, that they, these are big capital improvements. If it ends up being that they use C PACE, um, what the county commissioners would then receive would be from INCOG, from me. Um, it would be a cover sheet with a little thing on the project, what the amount is that the C PACE assessment. Um, that would be recorded on the property itself is, is for. And I would be asking the county commissioners going through the district attorney's office to put that assessment contract. One time on the Board of County Commissioners' agenda for an approval. It's signed, it is also signed by the property owner, private property owner and by the private capital. That assessment contract that the, the district attorney's already looked through is eighteen pages and all the legal terms that protect the county. So that they are not responsible for making any payments if there's any default. All of the issues legally are already determined in that assessment contract. So it would come through one time as an INCOG approved project with recommendation that the county approve uh the, the contract. You, it's signed and it's then I record that on the property. Um, actually, it's treasury, um, property mortgage taxes paid before it's reported, so you get some revenue there. And then as it's reported, it's, it's in the assessor's office as a special assessment. The improvements on that building directly resulting in additional taxes back to the county as well. So if there's really no um financial liability administratively, it's, that's it, what I just described, a one time coming through as a project. And then the one time opting in right now.
And that would come in through as a project each time somebody applied and.
Not applied, they have to be approved.
Approved and then it would come to us.
Correct, we've had nineteen so far since twenty one in the whole state, the majority of those have been in Tulsa and Oklahoma City. Um, but there have been, many of the counties about to close one next, uh, next month in fact, so. It doesn't happen all that much because they're bigger economic development projects typically, but it's, it's a good low hanging fruit revenue for counties to be, you know, offer this, this tool.
Charles is okay with it?
Charles said he was okay, the E D C was pushing it, um. But, I mean, it is for economic development, it's for, you know, big projects, but I did send it to Charles to see if he thought it was okay. And he read it, sent back and said, good, good.
I'm, I'm good with.
I guess I'm good too with it too.
They handle all the paperwork, but do we pay them too?
If there's a project that's closed, that's one of the reasons INCOG, as the regional government, stepped forward to do this as a template document. INCOG would get revenue in that closing, so there is a program administrator fee that the property owner would pay in that closing of the loan. So no, there is no beast in.
And he's at zero.
Yeah, we're at zero.
Correct, that is correct.
Yeah.
I think it's no different than like Tyler overseeing school finance or, or James, I mean, or, you know, Stephen McDonald or any of them. They all get their money through that.
But we just went through that thing with the O P L E.
Yeah.
Stuff, so, yeah.
If you get the mortgage uh qualified through the state government or the separate mortgage is recognized as a C PACE mortgage.
So that the mortgage tax is not paid, is.
No, so if you propose it, it, it's different for bunker.
The, in that assessment agreement, the explanation of what happens in fine foreclosure, it's treated as a mortgage. And, but just this, the, whatever is in arrears in a C PACE assessment, um, gets paid out in that foreclosure process.
You just put that with the mortgage, the assessment agreement, you file that with the mortgage.
It's filed as a special assessment, it doesn't accelerate, I'm not sure, I'm trying to get your question.
No, it doesn't accelerate, but it, the, the lien doesn't go away if you don't.
It does not accelerate, it stays, so let's say it does go through a foreclosure process, all of that is in the agreed upon document that the district attorney has already looked at. So the, what gets paid out is county gets paid first, because they always do. The C PACE assessment in arrears gets paid out and then the mortgage, hello, it's divvied. The new owner then picks up the title of that property with a C PACE assessment on it that is current. Because those property improvements would have already been made on that property, it had already been improved at that point, so that's the document, that's what that assessment.
If they don't pay their taxes and the treasurer sells it in June resale, how does that work?
The same way, that's that, the paragraph that describes that, all of that judgment, but they can't even get the C PACE assessment without one county ta, property taxes being current. And any other. and any other holders to a mortgage, any senior lender, any construction loan, all of those have to be party and sign a waiver of disclosure that they understand that the C-PACE assessment, the annual assessment portion has priority over a mortgage. But, of course, the county has the, the most senior priority in payment. So the, there's a lot of documents, I know. So the opt-in, the resolution itself is a five-page document, and it just says, we, Grady County, are interested in having this C-PACE program, enabling this type of financing here, and we are going to establish a program. And so the signature on page five does that. The program that you're establishing, you're opting into memorandum of agreement with INCOG, that is a seven-page document. And that includes three attachments to it. Exhibits one is a copy of that resolution that you just passed. The second is the template assessment contract that you'd be approving in template form, and the third is the program, thus, the guidelines themselves.
For some reason, if we decided to opt out?
Good, good question. The memorandum of agreement says just notify us within a ninety day, either side to, you know, if, if INCOG, it's a both ways. So I didn't bring with me INCOG signature, so I'm going to need to get that back to you after you opt in. So there's one page signed by INCOG and the commissioners for the memorandum. And that memorandum does have a clause that.
I make a motion based on Charles saying it was okay to approve it. The C-PACE Enabling Resolution.
I'm second.
Carrie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Okay, so.
And that next item is the memorandum of agreement, one agenda, with the three pages. Yeah, that's, I, I'm going to ask you that, who, and it can be, it doesn't have to even be a person. Often, it's like a position, the county clerk. It's whoever I can reach out to and say, hey, we're on the final parts of, about to approve the C-PACE project, and so there's going to, I'm going to have an approved, administratively approved project to bring back, back to the board. It's whoever I can reach out to, and.
It's time for a good job for the county clerk's office.
As long as we're not having to go in, and, you know, we, we have several things that the county clerk has took over.
So it.
I mean, what, what is their entail in this? I'm not putting my social security number on anything.
No, absolutely not.
Other things that's moved out in a way.
And you can just save county clerk's office, and that way you don't even need anything. And I would send you an email or give you a call and say, how, what's the best way for me to get you this document with signatures on it?
That's fine, as long as we're.
And it would need to go through the district.
The agenda.
Because it's a contract, though, it should go through the district attorney's office.
Right, and then to.
And approved as to a form. And we're, I'm going to make sure that there's no changes to it other than what's filled in the blank from the form that he's already seen. So it is.
And we send everything to the district attorney first.
Okay.
So he would, he would probably email it to me, and then we send it to the district attorney.
Okay, so, thank you. And that blank is just saying that the resolution has a blank on it too, but it's the same question.
So in fifteen, page five, there's one sign.
You see there's blanks that the county's writing, can you?
I'm, I'm just going to put it county clerk, that's totally.
I'll just scatter just the different pieces of the program.
Please, resolution number.
And I'll have to fill that out when we get it updated.
So do you need to take this today, or do you want me to send it to you?
However, you want to do that.
I know, I'm going to get a resolution, so I'll have to take it with me.
Okay, and then I would need to get you the signature of INCOG, executive director's signature on that page seven. So I'll need a copy, we'll have to coordinate that, okay? So, yeah. And is email, emailing or PDF work?
Uh, yes. Do you have my name?
No, I'll wait, no, I'll wait, I'll just get, oh, you can.
I'm just going to put it on the back of this.
So I'm. And that's the one.
I guess, I guess Trent Austin is about ready to start, did they call two?
Uh, on the roads.
Over, yeah.
Yeah, he said it'd be two weeks, I sent something to Kevin this morning.
Okay.
Omar didn't have your email, he wanted me to send it to you, so I sent it to Kevin.
Okay, I'm just now getting the messages from him.
I think there would need to be a separate section, um, approval item for the memorandum.
Yeah, I definitely got fifteen and sixteen, so we voted on fifteen, yeah.
That was fifteen and sixteen.
Sixteen is a memorandum agreement.
Yeah. That's what, that's what we're signing right there.
Yes.
Item sixteen is discussion and possible action to execute a memorandum agreement, MOA, with INCOG outsourcing program administration. The MOA has three attachments. Exhibits attached to separate files. A is exhibit one, a copy of the separately approved Enabling Resolution is incorporated in exhibit MOA is exhibit one. B is exhibit two, the template form, C-PACE assessment contract, the key transaction document, which is pre-approved by the ADA as to form in county opt-in. And C is exhibit three, the Oklahoma C-PACE Program Guidelines, Eligibility Requirements, Process, and Education Documents.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Carrie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Okay. And item seventeen. Discussion and possible approval of a project agreement between Grady County and Oklahoma Department of Transportation for the construction of Lake Access Project, project number JP number three eight eight six one oh four.
Make a motion to approve, this is a grant that John applied for and got for some road work out to Lake Chickasha.
I'll second.
Carrie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, item number eighteen, discussion and possible approval of the following. O dot four, three two four eight for the payment to Rebecca Wiley for easement and temporary easement in the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars. O dot ten, thirty, three twenty-four A for the payment to Peggy Scott for easement and temporary easement in the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars. Administrative settlement Rebecca Wiley and Peggy Scott, and negotiated amount adjustment for items not considered in the appraisal. Susan Renee Bell and Richard Chama Robertson, letter of decision for offer to the Lula Deadwiler Family Trust. Project Sarah Road over I forty-four, JP thirty-three five fifty-two oh four. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Carrie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, item nineteen, discussion and possible approval to deposit a check from V F I S in the amount of one thousand four hundred seventy-seven dollars which extends into the Grady County Fire Department M and O for damages twenty nineteen Chevrolet Unit seven oh two. I'll make a motion.
Yeah. Okay.
Carrie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
And item twenty, discussion and possible approval to deposit a check from Nextr, Energy Resources, in the amount of six thousand five hundred thirty-nine dollars ten cents into Iowa District Full M and O for revenue. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Carrie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Item twenty-one, discussion and possible approval of utility pipeline, road crossing permit, water line, fast line permit, and driveway penalty. Item twenty-two, discussion and possible approval of county officer monthly reports. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ruth?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Oh, mine did they sign the copy?
Did we sign one?
Well, there's two pages.
It's the one, the first one?
Yeah.
I always sign those.
Yeah, I don't.
I'm assuming that that's Caleb's, yours. But.
I definitely think this came from.
Lovely thing.
She's done it.
You haven't created transfer yet.
Item twenty-three, discussion and possible approval of best of needs, request for appropriations and transfer appropriations.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Carrie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Carrie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.